Yes. The program. And then we'll talk to. Yeah, there's something wrong. But it's good that we put together and we realized. So. I was saying if someone had the same resolution, I mean you said someone had different amount. Do you have a different max case?
But in resolution numbers, did you have someone have two of the multiple resolutions?
Right. It was, I did it for the okay. So your first one except for the place you were confused. Nothing longer than it did. So you had to do it. Yeah. Oh, okay. I took with me three or four and I put all in there. Like what?
Ain't nothing nice about it, it's alright. Let's tell people that, I ain't gonna tell no story. And more so, yes and no. It's not good to you too.
And everyone getting this stuff again. If you get it well. Yeah. Start all over. This is. I can do that stuff. No. No. Sorry, it's two hours. You gotta sit there, man.
No, I signed it.
I know, but you guys finished still two hours.
It says it's valid. Look where it says it's not valid.
You know what?
Hi, Councilman.
For breakfast.
I did.
Does that happen?
Oh, it's serious. You know what?
Like I would rather have that.
So what is that?
I'll bring over the sign up for the supplement.
He's throwing eggs.
And the cake and mix.
There's a button for supplement of classes. Probably gave you that.
Hi, Councilman, don't worry.
Some of those ashtrays.
That's a.
Yeah. No.
I pass those out. You do that one later, Robert, on Sunday. Man, you have to do it too.
How you feeling?
I was just getting up. You know, originally it was twenty minutes. Uh huh. But I tried to get to go back.
Move up here, can't see.
Okay.
Hey, you. What are you doing? I was working on a talk about the senior center and the meals program.
About the what?
Senior Center and the meals program?
Oh, uh huh.
I thought you were taking bodily shots with me. That's why I was waiting a long time. For your Instagram. Yeah, I don't even have it. No. I'm not handing it back. You don't?
It's freezing in here.
I see things in my office.
It's cold.
It was that way yesterday.
Oh, really? It's cold.
I know you're talking. Did you have to prove? Did you have to prove? Show that you would be.
Chris isn't here. I don't see Chris Jackson, because he has two iron. We have a short term rentals.
Do they have a. That's right. No, they should be sitting like that. Yeah. It gets printed, but I'm sure in there it must move up the. No, I clearly decided. All it said was, I need in my file, like two hour worth of stuff, so I just gotta go back. Yeah, that's what the.
I think that, yes, I guess it's under this presentation.
In order, my file needs audited, in order to be approved. Well. They, you know what? They say they want out of duty, say I get a public. I'll give them some points. They'll give, they'll send me a public practice request that. Yeah. That'll be. Yeah, I gotta do it. Last year was, they did request from somebody to. This is it, I think today, man. Yeah, it starts at five. Baseball's not today. Yeah, it's not Monday. We need to. We need baseballs now. I stopped playing professionally a couple of years ago, like Steve and up until now. Or is. Yeah. I can't even watch it, P T S D. So you're playing professional baseball while you're working here? Yeah, I was watching professional baseball.
It was a pickleball league.
Pickleball, pickleball. You know, you're a pickleball expert.
I know what pickle is, and then there's pickleball.
Call to order the council meeting of October twenty seventh nineteen twenty, twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty. And we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Right over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, do you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, the Corm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, so here's the way that you comment. By telephone or listening to the meeting and making public comments, you may participate by dialing into six nine 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 hundred six eight eight three. Meeting ID nine nine six one seven three eight seven seven.
Uh, we're in the open session.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
So, too late for that one. If you wanna, wanna dial in now, you dial one eight eight two five one two nine four nine, or two one five eight six one zero six nine four. Using this specific code for today, the access code is two five nine two six seven zero pound. And to view and listen to the meeting without making comments, you can go to Spectrum Cable Channel thirty five with audio and video, or you can go live online through Facebook Live with Audio Unlimited Video. So with that, we'll open public comment. Operator, are there any persons on the line?
As we move to public comment, please press pound two on your telephone keypad to enter the queue. You'll hear a notification when your line is unmuted. At that time, please state your name and comment. And don't see any hands coming up at this time.
Okay, close public comment, item one, CSA one and H one.
Want registered.
Reveal our payment.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members and housing authority members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. Madam, uh, just one second. Okay, we're pulling PH one. And PH two.
And PH.
And PH two. So now we're moving to consent calendar. Items two through ten.
So move.
Second, I believe, Mayor, you were gonna pull one for discussion.
Wait, wait a minute.
Number two.
I know there's a staff report.
I, I wasn't gonna pull that.
Oh, no?
Uh uh. The nutrition services program.
Is there, it was a.
There was a memo sent, Mayor requesting that be pulled because they're filming it for a show they're doing. The.
Staff.
Staff is doing a show, that's why.
They wanted to pull two because they're filming a show.
Yeah, they want to, they want to tape the present, tape the presentation.
Okay. Well, so, so we're pulling it off consent, but not off the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so, so if we're voting on three through ten.
Do you wanna rescind the motions, Mayor?
I, I saw a move to rescind the first.
Second, okay.
And now I make the motion to approve the.
Three to ten.
Three to ten.
And second that.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, and so now we'll hear item two.
Staff report recommending approval of amendment two of the elderly nutrition program services sub ward number E N P two zero two one zero seven with County of Los Angeles workforce development, aging and community services to reflect award of additional funding for provision of the elderly nutrition program.
Ms. Barnes.
I have to bring the Barnes direct from Parks Recreation. The library and community services, I'm pleased to be here with you as we accept additional funding for our senior nutrition program. I'd love to speak about it and take all the credit, but I can't take it because you've been a great support to us, but also because the senior center staff has been working tirelessly, like we do as city employees, to make sure our seniors receive meals. When we had the shutdown, these folks did not get to shut down because they were delivering meals nonstop. I'd like to introduce to you our food services manager, Baz Devliat, who will speak briefly about the program.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. Our elderly nutrition, first of all, my name is Baz Devliat, I am the program manager for the nutrition program. It's an incredible program. Right now, we deliver approximately five hundred and fifty seniors in the city, we deliver meals to, we deliver them lunches. Those lunches are nutritionally balanced, vitamin A, vitamin C, their proteins, their fibers, it's a very well thought out meal. This item that is going before you is to expand the scope of our program, to then include breakfast and dinner as well. So every senior who's on our program willing, receive their breakfast nutritionally balanced, their lunch nutritionally balanced, and their dinner. We want those seniors to stay at home, stay safe, and stay well fed.
Great.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Thank you very much, good job.
Good work, guys.
Okay.
May I move the approval of items one and two?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. D R one.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution amending the terms and conditions of employment for employees represented by the Inglewood Police Management Association.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. O one.
Staff report recommending the introduction of the salary ordinance for fiscal year two zero two zero dash two zero twenty one.
Motion, wait for the reading.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
I introduce.
Okay, so now we're on to reports from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, we have two close sessions. The first one was William Charles, the claim number for workers' compensation is eighteen dash one three four three three seven. There's a request for settlement authority to the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty cents.
I saw a move.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, CM one.
Uh, the CS two, Mary, the second one is Lauren Robinson, first of the city of Inglewood, L A Superior Court case number eighteen S T C P zero four two four seven. As to that, a status on the case was provided to the city council and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, CM one.
Thank you, Mayor, there are no oral reports from the city manager's office.
C C one.
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to encourage everyone to go and vote this coming Tuesday, November the third. Early voting has started, and feel free to call the city clerk's office at three ten four one two five two eight zero if you have any questions regarding your voting matters. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, C T one.
Monthly charges report for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Receiving file CSA two.
Monthly charges report for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Receiving file adjourned to successor A N C H two.
Monthly charges report for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Receiving file adjourned to housing authority, call to order the Inglewood Joint Powers Authority.
Yes, Mayor, monthly charges report for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Receiving file adjourned to Joint Powers Authority, there are no appointments to boards and commissions. Public comment, any person wishing to make a comment on other matters not on the agenda may do so at this time, one minute. Operator, are there any callers on the line?
We currently have three.
Alright.
Caller, your line has been unmuted, please go ahead.
Mayor and city council, Gil Matthew, District Four. There is something amiss with your meetings. Nobody could talk on the public, I mean, on the agenda. I was in the queue along with five other people. And nobody's being heard.
Well, go, go ahead, Mister, uh, Matthew, go ahead.
Yeah, what I'm just trying to explain to you that we need some improvement on the, on the, uh, of these meetings.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Matthew.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. Now, you had a meeting on Wednesday, you're in a violation of the Brown Act. You need seventy two hours before you can post a meeting. You had a meeting on a Wednesday, the very next day, and there was no emergency. And why are you giving the money away to Obama with this, with this E N A, and you haven't had any approval from the residents?
What money, what money are we giving away?
You, you gave almost, I want eight hundred thousand dollars in legal fees, you hired someone, I don't know if you're reading what you, what you had a meeting on.
Absolutely, you're eating what we, what we do. But what, what were you just saying?
Well, if you're reading, you ask me what money you gave, eight hundred million, I mean, eight hundred thousand for legal fees, and then you're talking about eminent domain. Now, how you gonna give eminent domain where you have a property that you're gonna give to a private company? Advice.
Okay, Mister, um, Matthew, if, if we do an eminent, eminent procedure, the, uh, the, if they're reimbursable, then the, the four fees are reimbursed to the city.
No, it's reimbursed with the city, I understand that. Okay, all the properties, all the money, those are, uh, successor agent, they property. All proceeds go to the redevelopment agency, that's not the question. Not the question at all.
Okay, you're a little confused, Mister Matthew, is there any other issue you have?
Yeah, I have lots of issues.
I know you do, but, but, but just the ones that we can handle in the next couple of minutes.
What I can, the next couple of minutes. Number, number two, I, if in fact, when are you gonna get permission from the residents that they want a stadium, arena? You did it with the stadium, the residents never approved it, they never had a chance to.
Mister Matthew.
You made a new round of decisions to the council.
Mister Matthew, they make, they make the approvals and things called elections, they elect people to make decisions for the city.
I understand that, I understand that, that's not the issue.
And if they disapprove.
Elect you half time quizzes.
If they disapprove.
And it has some diapants against Inglewood since you've been elected.
I know.
And I was, oh, you said we ten million dollars short in the budget deficit, and you're spending money like a, like a drunk sailor.
Okay. I, I, I really don't think, I really don't think you understand the totality of what's going on. The shortfall was due to COVID related drop in sales tax, it has nothing to do with the arena.
I understand what is due to Mayor Butts, huh, you've been three million dollars deficit ever since I've been here. On, on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, on the thing that we do every year. I understand that, it's, it's, it's thinking, and you can't get it down where you're spending, your revenue and your spending is gonna match. I understand all of your, but you're not answering my questions, and you're not talking about the same thing.
I would get there.
Okay. Okay, okay, well, we, I think we've, I think we've caught you up, Mister Matthew, operator, will you go to the next caller?
Caller, your line has been unmuted, please go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Mendez, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you perfectly well, ma'am.
Okay, so my name is Anna Mendez, I, um, I work for the hotel industry, and I'm also a resident of the, of the city of Inglewood. I am in District, in Eloy's District, and I'm calling today because I am concerned of PH one and PH two, the short term rental regulations in feet.
Okay, you know, you know those are pulled, but you go right ahead.
Is it?
Go right, those were pulled from the agenda today, but you go right ahead.
Okay, well, I just, I, I wanna make it, I wanna raise my voice to, to these two, um, um, issues in, in the city. I've seen this happening in downtown, and I was, um, I was, I was a participant in regulating it in the city of Los Angeles, and I encourage residents in Inglewood to do the same thing here, because I want to know who my neighbors are, who's coming in and out of my city, and because these are very small districts, it has a great impact on knowing who's coming in and out of our city. Eloy, um, I would love you to, to really take a look at this, and I know that, um, because you live here, you know that this is a small community in your district, and it has a big impact.
What is your name, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Uh, my name is Anna Mendez.
Anna Mendez, oh, okay, thank you. And what is your address? Oh, you don't have to give it to me right now, thank you.
I, I saw your office before, I'll call you.
Yeah, exactly, I do recall you, and you're welcome to give us a call, and we can set up a meeting to discuss it, thank you.
Okay, 'cause I have, I have a few, like blocks where it's happening a lot, and I have a concern with it.
You're welcome to set up a meeting right now, your time is up, and I think the mayor is gonna move on to the next caller, so, but you're welcome to call my office and set up another meeting. Uh, I've no, I believe we've spoken before.
Okay, operator, the next caller.
Your line has been unmuted, please state your name and then comment.
Hi, hi, honorable mayor and council, my name is Charlie Carneau, and I'm with Unite Here, the Hospitality Workers Union, and I just wanna echo what Anna said. We need a strong short term rental ordinance, I know it was pulled today, in particular, what we wanna say is that we need to ban whole home and, and unhosted rentals and vacation rentals. That was initially what the planning commission had recommended, and that's a strong, more easily enforceable way of solving this issue, uh, to make sure we protect our communities and stop our housing from being lost. Um, thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir. Operator, are there any other callers on the line?
At this time, there are no other comments.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Council comments, Councilman Dodson, District One.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the economic development for this wonderful thing for our seniors. You have no idea how some of those seniors need those meals, so that is really great. Thank you so very much for, for thinking about them and, and making that happen. Voting. You know, uh, we talk about voting, and we hope that people hear us. But if you know like I know, you need to go vote, because there at one time you couldn't vote. So now is your time to do what you need to do. Take the time out, call your sisters, your brothers, your cousins, and have them, if you have to help them vote. But please go out and vote. And the, the, the places that is open right now is Rogers Park and the Forum. So, um, with that, make sure you wear your masks, distance, and take care of yourself, thank you very much.
Mr. Sergeant Arms, would you see if Senator Bradford wanted to speak? Senator Bradford, welcome.
Thank you.
You want me masked here or unmasked, what's your preference?
We do the mask.
You do the mask.
Always wore a mask.
Yeah, well, you know, I know a time when a black and brown guy couldn't walk in a room with a mask.
Especially in the two eleven.
Yes.
Hey, just FYI, it's still that time, I'm sure.
You know what I'm saying? Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, members of the council, Madam Treasurer, Madam City Clerk, uh, for the work that you've done throughout this difficult time. My name is Steve Bradford, the Senator for the thirty fifth Senate District, and has been my practice for the ten years that I represented the city of Inglewood, previously as your assembly person, now as your Senate, and a Senator, to bring a legislative update of the things that I have worked on, not only individually, but collectively as a state over the past year. We must all agree with this pandemic, it's been a very difficult, uh, year for all of us on the local, state, and federal level in order to provide the necessary resources and services that the constituents of not only Inglewood, but the state of California, this nation needs. So I commend the local elected officials, because many times, as we say, that's where the rubber meets the road, that's where the real service. That's where the real services are provided. We on the state and federal level can often rain down with dollars, but the, uh, implementation and delivery, similar to the Meals on Wheels program, is done by the local staff here. Um, I'm happy to report that despite the pandemic, uh, the state of California passed the on-time and balanced budget in June that the governor signed. And I wanna commend our, both our budget chairs in both houses, Assemblyman Phil Ting on the Assembly side and Senator Holly Mitchell on the Senate side for bringing forth the budget that not only both houses agreed upon, but the governor as well. And despite having to, uh, dig into our fifty-four billion dollar reserve, uh, we were able to deliver a budget that had no cuts and no increased taxes, so I'm excited about that. At the onset of the pandemic, uh, I had introduced nine, twenty pieces of legislation. Uh, and we left Sacramento on March, I think, sixteenth after declaring that, uh, we were gonna shut down the Capitol, but we didn't stop our work. Upon returning, uh, the second week in May, uh, our leadership, Senator, President Protiem, Tony Atkins, asked all legislators to reduce their bill package down to that which was COVID-related or COVID-specific pieces of legislation. So my bill package went from, um, twenty down to seven. But I was also appointed as the co-chair of the Economic Recovery Task Force, both myself and Senator Hertzberg. And through that collaboration with eight other senators, we came up with a variety of pieces of legislation that was COVID-specific to help move California forward and making sure that people stay whole. One of the biggest issues that was discussed was renter protection. But not only renter protection, landlord protection. Because if your renter can't pay his rent, the landlord can't make his note. And many times, people felt we were only focusing on the renters, but we came with a collaborative effort. I was hap- happy to introduce a piece of legislation that had bipartisan collaboration of both houses. It was a Senate bill, but we morphed it into an Assembly bill again by reducing, uh, our bill load, and it was AB thirty-eighty-eight, which is, again, the tenant landlord protection, which affords renters, uh, not a forbearance of their rent for good, but allows them to pay a minimum of twenty-five percent of their rent. If, in fact, under penalty of perjury, they can show that they were impacted by COVID. But at the same time, we put some backstops for landlords, making sure we were asking some of our financial institutions. I chair, uh, banking and financial services and making sure that we've, uh, made sure through state, uh, franchise tax boards, trying to provide tax credits to these landlords, making sure our financial institutions would not foreclose on these landlords who, understanding they have tenants who couldn't make their rent. And we were able to come together with a, a bill that had eviction protection and forbearance on foreclosures for.
So, so, so what does it, exactly what does a landlord have to do if the tenants can't pay rent and they're behind on their mortgage? How do they seek this protection?
They, they can, they can get it, initially it was gonna be a tax credit, but they're, but again, we've worked with a forbearance level where we've holding off through the state foreclosures on these properties. Until February of, uh, next year, renters will then have to show good faith effort to start repaying, uh, the back rents as well during that period of time.
Okay, as you know, we're gonna get a lot of questions about this.
I understand.
What you're saying is the, the ridges and rent are not forgiven. They have to work out a payment plan?
What I did, starting at the next year, the payments start.
So, so is the landlord required to accept the payment plan?
Yes, I mean, in order to make himself whole, yes. I mean, they can start evictions after that for whatever reason, but this is what we were trying to avoid, evictions.
I know, but see, people are gonna ask us about this, and I get you, I think this is wonderful, but that's not what I'm saying. Suppose the landlord doesn't agree to a payment plan. They say the tenant wants to pay fifty dollars a month towards the ridges and the landlord says, no, I want five hundred a month. What, what happens in that case?
We have a minimum of a twenty-five, uh, percent of the rent. That's what the law states, the bill states that they will have to pay a good faith of twenty-five percent of the rent. So I don't think anybody would be paying fifty dollars, so we're asking.
No, what I'm saying is, so that's twenty-five percent going forward, but as far as the ridges, what about the payment plan for the ridges? How does that agreement work? What lever does the state provide for the landlord to say it's not enough if you wanna pay fifty a month towards the ridges? I understand the twenty-five percent a month minimum, but what, what happens if the landlord doesn't agree to the payment plan? Are they allowed to evict or not?
Start, first of the year, they could start their eviction process.
Okay, so I just, because we're gonna be asked that.
No, I understand.
And, and then the last part is, when you say that, that the lenders are gonna be, by law, statutorily required to work with the, the owners of the properties, what does that mean? What does that look like? Does, is there something specific that says you cannot foreclose? You must forbear the amounts? Exactly, how does that work?
It's still a work in progress, that's what we're saying, we're still moving.
So it hasn't been passed yet?
It has been passed, the governor signed it, uh, two months ago. And, and, but again, we understand this, we're building a plan as we fly, it's a whole lot of moving parts here. At first, we had a agreement trying to, again, provide tax credits and we met with landlords and it says, I love the tax credit, you can sell it a year late, uh, starting at the first of the year, but it says, that doesn't necessarily make me whole, so we, we, we adjusted that. We then went to the franchise tax board, we went to lending institutions and tried to work out some other agreements. But it's still a work in progress, we're, we, we wanna protect landlords just as much as we wanna protect tenants, so, uh, I think.
I, I know, but what I'm saying, so when they ask us specifically, does this law prevent foreclosure, then it sounds like you're saying that's not definite right now.
It, it, it holds it off until the first of the year.
Okay, and then after the first of the year, which is.
But we might've, we might've had all the kinks worked out by the first of the year, we're still working on it.
All right.
I was gonna follow up.
It gives, it gives us a little leeway to continue to work, it's a work in progress, but it's more than what we have.
And, you know, I agree, Senator, that, that this is a kinda missing component in, in our reaction as a whole, uh, in the state of California. And we all had great intentions and that has to be addressed, but now that you've come up with that kind of, uh, process, uh, has the state addressed who's gonna monitor this in terms of, um, any rates that have to be confirmed as twenty-five percent? And then, is there any kind of, uh, avenues that a person who actually lost their job, uh, can go through, uh, to qualify for any kind of relief on that? Because to any law, there's going to be exceptions. And here in the city of Inglewood, a majority of our renters work for the service industry, which has not gotten back on track. So those are questions, like the mayor said, we're, we're gonna get a separate set of questions that, you know, we don't line up directly with all of the other cities. And has the state developed a department that can address that? And how would we go about it?
You can go by, by conducting my office because we're continuing to work on this. Again, a tenant must sign a document under penalty of perjury that states that their income has been affected by COVID. If they lie, they suffer the cost of, so that's first and foremost.
So this would be very helpful because, you know, like, we, obviously, we don't have the information. Do you have a number that we can put out so that people with questions can call?
They can call my office, but it's no specific number in the state that is set up right now.
Oh, no, I'm in your office, I want to your office.
Yeah, uh, three-ten, four-one-two, sixty-one-twenty.
Four-one-two, sixty-one-twenty.
Three-ten. And again, additionally, small landlords have more leverage in seeking forbearance or mortgage protections than the lenders. Again, this is not for the mega guys, because we've learned most of the mom-and-pop landlords are frontline essential workers, our bus drivers, our male people, our school teachers, and we wanna protect them. This is not about protecting the guys that own thousands of units, this is about the person that has a duplex down the street and that's their retirement, that's their kid's college, you know, tuition, or, you know, just supplementing their income, so that's.
And we wanna funnel them to you, we want people to get the exact right information.
And, and, and I'm sorry, and you can, and you can find more information on housingkey.com.
Housing he?
Key, K-E-Y dot com. Housing key, no, I'm sorry, housing is key, my, you know, housing is key.
And Senator, all, all of us have newsletters and everything else, and if you have formulated some communications, I'd love to forward it out to my.
We've been blasting out, we'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but housingiskey.com, I apologize, housingiskey.com. And let me quickly run through, uh, the six measures that, uh, the seven that I, I moved forward, which six got to the governor's desk, I'll be real quick. SB.
No, it's too late to be quick.
Well, I mean.
Go ahead, I'm taking.
I'm just, I'm just.
It's too late to be quick.
Forgive me for doing some work. SB fourteen-forty-seven, which is the small business tax credit. Uh, outside of invictions and, uh, more, uh, forbearance, uh, we've heard from small businesses. We know sixty percent of the small businesses that have been impacted by this pandemic probably will never open their doors again. SB fourteen-forty-seven, I secured a hundred million dollars for small businesses. Any small business that rehires or hires new after July one of this year will get a thousand-dollar tax credit all the way up until the end of the year. They apply for that in December. And it's for any business that's lost fifty percent of their, uh, uh, gross revenues over the first six months. So they can apply for that hiring tax credit, there's a hundred million dollars.
And so, so that we make that clear for people, what a tax credit means is if you, if you owe taxes, then you pay a thousand dollars less than what the state says you owe the state, but not the federal government, is that right?
That's right.
So if a business owes the state three thousand dollars in, um, income taxes, then, then the credit will let them pay two thousand. It isn't that they get money, they don't, they pay less taxes, okay?
And, and it's businesses with a hundred or fewer employees. Again, we're looking at small businesses.
And that have lost fifty percent of their income.
That's fifty percent year-over-decline in grocery receipts during, uh, the second quarter of this year. And again, I'll just state it, businesses with one hundred or fewer employees may be eligible and can use either income or sales or use tax payments, including down payments of one year, zero interest extensions on sale tax if they took advantage of the fifty-thousand-dollar extension as authorized early, earlier this year by, uh, executive action. And anyone from a local government may, tax credits was funded by the budget, uh, Budget Junior this year, so they're, to our budget, so the money's there. And you can expect to see more information come December one on this information.
Suppose they took a loss this year and they didn't owe any taxes, does this credit extend into the future? Can they take it for next year?
Uh, no, it's just till right now, for, yeah. Uh, quickly, banking and financial institutions, I chair banking, uh, we passed SB eleven-fifty-seven, which is the first in the nation. It affords renters, again, renters of subsidized units, the ability to have their on-time rent payments reported to a credit bureau. As we all know, individuals who have lived in an apartment or a house for years and pay their rent on time, they show no benefit from it, but let them be late one month. And they're quickly dinged and have a negative credit report. This is the first in its nation where a individual who shows, pays rent on time, uh, can now have, and it's again, a voluntary program between the landlord and the tenant to report those on-time payments so an individual can build credit in order for them to achieve the American dream and hopefully, uh, buying a house at some point.
I'm sorry, Senator, that's a great program. The landlord has to agree or the tenant or both?
Both, both.
Both? Okay, well, let's hope they do.
Yeah, I mean, we worked out, it was, it was a lot of back and forth with folks, but yeah, it's for the subsidized units, but, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, quickly moving to public safety and, uh, criminal justice, SB two-oh-three, uh, youth interrogation, uh, governor signed that just last month. It requires any minor under the age of eighteen before they can waive their Miranda rights to be able to consult with an attorney. We all know what happened thirty years ago in New York with the Central Part Five, when you had five of those young men confess to a crime that they did not commit, so this is.
I think that's great, that's an awesome, that is a great measure.
Thank you, and, uh, so yes, we, we, we got that passed. Uh, consumer safety, uh, SB twelve-forty-four, regardless where you fall in this measure, cannabis, cannabis was deemed an essential business during the pandemic. I worked with, uh, city attorney, Mike Fuer, to make sure everything, whether it's from medicinal use or adult use, have to be tested before it hits the streets. And so we're making all these testing laboratories, they have, they can't refuse it, they have to come in and test the product if they find someone selling it, we want it tested, we wanna make sure consumers are protected now that this is deemed an essential business, so.
Are these testing labs, are they state-run or?
They're state-run, they're local-run too, we're, 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 we're want, working with our, uh, local agencies to make sure that these labs available to test these products before they go on the street, so.
So, so they're deemed essential for the medicinal use, not for the recreation?
I'm sorry?
They're deemed essential for the medicinal use and not the recreation?
Well, it, it, it really didn't define, it just said cannabis was a central business during this time as well as, you know.
I got it.
You know. Uh, so those were the six measures, uh, real quick, uh, no, I'm sorry, one more, number six is eleven-ninety-two, Benefit and Relief, Relief Association, I think, the mayor and, um, Councilman Padilla will appreciate this. It provides, uh, peace officers, firefighters, the benefit association with long-term disability and care by enhancing transparency, uh, with these associations and the Department of Insurance. Many times, officers are injured and even though they're fully covered, they don't necessarily get all the benefits that they're entitled to. So working with our esteemed, uh, insurance commissioner, we came up with a transparency program to make sure that we make sure that these men and women who are injured on the job get the benefits that they're entitled to, uh, full, full coverage. And last but not least of the seven, one did not make, uh, make it to the governor's desk only because it didn't fail by lack of votes, it just never got a vote. And that's SB seven-three-one, better known as the Kenneth Frost Junior Police Decertification Act of two thousand and twenty. That measure would have provided a decertification process for road police officers here in the state of California. California is one of five outlying states that does not have a decertification process. And again, many folks said this is an attack on law enforcement, far from it. This is an attack on bad officers within good law enforcement to identify those individuals. Again, California is one of only five states that doesn't have a process, you could literally be fired from the department here in the state of California and get hired by an apartment the next day with no penalty. This is for officers who have committed felonies, who've used unjustified uses of force. It provides a transparency process that involves not only law enforcement review, but citizen review as well. It requires posts to have a last say in whether an officer is decertified. Uh, we all have to admit, if there's bad doctors, there's bad pastors, there's bad teachers, there's bad elected officials, lawyers, then we have to admit that they're bad law enforcement. And this is what we're trying to target, not law enforcement as a whole. So I'm excited about the fact that, uh, we have great support from our former DA, Gil Sadio, I mean, Gil Sadio.
Garcetti.
Gil Garcetti, who's already on board with moving this forward next year. Lakers NBA champion Kyle Kuzma is on board, Billie Eilish, Al Black, we have a slew of celebrities, but more importantly, we have the community who asked for this bill. And if, under regular circumstances, this bill probably would have flown through both the houses, but being the fact that constituents weren't, wasn't able to come up to the Capitol and look their legislator in the eye and ask them to put a vote out on this bill, it was held up due to a time crunch. So we will be reintroducing that bill, the governor has already made a commitment as well as the leadership of both houses to continue with our criminal justice reform packages that didn't seem to lie to date this year. So in the interest of time, I just wanna thank you for this opportunity to, to present what we have done this year, and I look forward to continuing our work. And again, if there's any questions about any of the things that we've discussed, feel free to call my office here in the district, right here in Inglewood on the sixth floor, three-ten, four-one-two, sixty-one-twenty. And on that, I would say, go blue.
So, so Senator, I, I personally wanna thank you for you and your staff keeping me abreast of different activities going on throughout the county. And just recently, you sent out with the LA County Public Health Department, you are in conjunction with free flu shots and identified their various sites where people that may not be employed, but they need the shots and have medical plans, but now they can get it free, which is critical at this time of year. Thank you very much.
No problem. And I know the city does a great turkey giveaway, but for some reason, you missed out on Inglewood's, on November twenty-third, I will be hosting with Carson, uh, I mean, Gardena, YMCA, a turkey giveaway as well, so we just wanna put that out to all the residents of the Thirty-Fifth Senate District.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, Senator took all your time.
For, for like three weeks.
I have a PowerPoint.
Don't go in your bus like that.
I have a PowerPoint.
So for the next five meetings, nobody gets to talk. Go ahead, Councilman Padilla, District Two.
And I'll keep it brief, you know, I just wanna thank, I know last week I talked about the food giveaway, teaming up with, uh, Councilman Herb Wesson, so I wanna thank him and his, all the volunteers that came out, it was a huge success. Several hundred cars came through, it was a drive-through, and, uh, we gave away ten pounds of, uh, of chicken and a box of a bunch of food. And I also wanna thank IUSD. And I also wanna thank IUSD, uh, trustee, the executive Erica Torres. Uh, again, a huge event, uh, the folks came out, and it's just nice to be able to see the smile on their faces when we give them this, uh, much-needed food for them to enjoy, and that kinda goes in line with what we're doing with the seniors, uh, the program that you're doing there to, to help feed them breakfast, lunch, and dinner, uh, and give them, giving them a quality meal. As you can see by the pictures, uh, we had, uh, I think it was a well over 300 cars that came out to that event. That being said, I got my Dodger blue on, go Dodgers, let's win it tonight, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Franklin, District Four.
Go Dodgers and be safe and enjoy the game, thank you, Mayor.
That's it?
That's it.
Councilor Morales.
Thanks, well. Uh, some of the same, um, I just wanted to thank, uh, Sabrina Barnes, the Parks and Rec, the gentleman that showed up. I've gotten a lot of calls actually from, uh, seniors that are enjoying that delivery. Uh, I hope that you guys come up with a flyer that I could send out in regards to adding the breakfast and dinner, 'cause that's, that's amazing actually, uh, that they get that, so that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I, I wanna give that number again, 310-410-6120, because it sounds.
412, Mayor.
412, not 0.
6120.
You sure it's 412?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna give it again, 310-412-6120, that's Senator Bradford's office, and that's for direct information on any of those Assembly bills that he discussed. I think particularly the ones that relate to potential rent and foreclosure relief are, are very important. It doesn't sound like they're totally sorted out for after January 1, but, um, that, that is very helpful. That in addition to what the city's been able to provide, up to three months of, uh, back rent for the people that applied, and then this going forward with 25% minimum payment of rent until January 1, with hopefully more relief to come, is very important. And with that, we're adjourned, thank you.